Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Seaside Planning Commission for Wednesday, February 26. At twenty twenty five at six P M. Let's call the meeting to order, please, and do our roll call.
Commissioner Wen. Commissioner Evans.
President.
Commissioner La Micah.
President.
Commissioner Owens. Commissioner Dodson.
President.
And Chair Silva.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. Item number three, we're going to review the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? It says none, so I take it we're moving along. And public comment, we're not having any, it says here. Is that correct? General public comment? There's a comment here that says none. Oh, you know what? I'm looking at minutes. Gosh, then I said the wrong date on on my introduction as well. I apologize. Today is the Wednesday, March twenty sixth, not February twenty sixth, meeting of the planning commission. So do we have any items that have arisen after the seventy two hour posting deadline that we need to bring? None? Okay, moving on. Public comment, we're going to open the meeting to the the general public. These are items that are not on tonight's agenda. If anybody wishes to speak, please come forward to the podium, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak. All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. These are the ones that I was looking at a moment ago for the February twenty sixth meeting. At twenty twenty five. Do we have any comments from the commissioners? We have a motion to approve the minutes. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. All right, first item of business is a architectural review application, number A R twenty twenty four dash zero one zero. Gary Coats of Coats Consulting applicant and A P Glover Enterprises LLC owner are requesting architectural review approval for the architectural design landscaping and lighting for a permitted by right multifamily use located at forty three eighty six and forty three eighty seven Parker Flats. Cut off road in the high density residential zoning district. Architectural review, it says it's not an activity subject to California Environmental Quality Act.
Thanks for the intro commissioners, Beth Rocha introducing this item tonight and going through the architectural review. So we're going to review this in conformance with Seaside Municipal Code Section seventeen sixty two zero three zero. As stated in the introduction, architectural review is not an activity subject to CEQA. And the purpose of architectural review is to look at three major components and each of those has elements broken down in them. I'll have an intro slide for each as we move through, but we're going to be looking at architectural considerations, character, quality, scale, materials, landscape. It's pretty straightforward in terms of what they're proposing to do and also what we require for it being a drought tolerant design. And then moving on to lighting considerations for outdoor lighting. Part of lighting is also looked at in architectural review for those fixtures that are attached to the structure as well as site fencing. So the image on the left is a zoomed out shot of seaside. We have to zoom out that much to capture where the site is located. You can see the top of the city essentially Orde Grove and Military on the bottom left of that image. And then way to the top right and then zoomed in on the image of the right is zoomed in aerial of the existing site where you can see the two nurses barracks buildings perpendicular to each other and the existing parking lot in the red circled area. There's a couple of aerial and topographic maps just to orient all of us to the site as you're approaching from the road, you're going uphill where then it's pretty much leveled out. Where the buildings and existing parking areas place and then it continues to go back down into Ford Ward from there. I wanted to bring this up because there's a handful of images that I have where I don't show the full extent of the property boundaries in the plans when we zoom in a bit closer. But emphasize the boundary of the property lines with the red dash line on this site plan image for you. And then just a bit more info arrow indicating the driveway going up. And a few things outlined in terms of density for the RH zone, sixty units are proposed, twenty nine duplex units and two single standalone units. The single standalone units are in the red boxes that you see to the left of the arrow, a few units over, and then the top right unit is a single standalone. The maximum density that could be allowed here would be up to a hundred and twenty four units. But as you may recall, with the sale of the property and the water allocation that was given, it's kind of a limiting factor. Also in the general plan regarding density for neighborhood height, it's up to two hundred and twenty four, forty five units per acre. But again, that would require way more water than what is available. So at sixty units, it seems to be even larger than we saw last time around, which was at forty two units. So we're going up by eighteen. And we'll get into maybe a condition of affordable housing towards the end, twenty percent or twelve the units have to be affordable. Moving on to architectural considerations, what you have to consider in the information that's presented before you is the character quality, scale, design, structures, materials, colors, fencing and lighting. Just a quick intro to how the site plan is laid out. Three potential unit sizes in terms of the counts kind of distributed ranging from nine hundred to nine hundred and ninety square feet. The single unit layout is shown on the left, fitting everything within twenty five feet wide. This is not being subdivided into separate parcels, so this is all essentially one site of a multifamily development. On the right, the only thing that I highlighted here to look at is the carport structures, which are going to be staggered in between each unit. So you have a parking space in the open and then you have a covered parking space which meets the zoning code requirements. Here's a couple of renderings of the facades. The units are going to be pre manufactured offsite by Fleetwood Homes, which is based in Riverside. And they're going to be delivered onsite and then secured to permanent foundations. Exterior siding and porches kind of straightforward. There's going to be a mix. There's a couple of conditions of approval that talk about equally distributed mixes of both colors, materials and finishes. They're going to have three different exterior finishes, the horizontal lap siding, board and batten, and then flat exterior is using T one eleven panels with framed windows. Here's just another rendering of the potential flat finish and what that will look like. And then moving forward to some of the exterior colors and materials, the decking is going to be a composite material by Fibron. Roof shingles are going to be black and then you see the paint color options, which is gray and moving into a dark blue. Going to be again scattered throughout the site, the duplex unit, there's a condition of approval on that, that each duplex unit be one color, not to mix the colors side by side, which I also think is the only way to make it feasible during manufacturing. Here's a couple of elevations just showing one of the layouts of the potential exterior materials and then circled are the proposed exterior light fixtures that are proposed on the outside of the building. So the ones on the side of the building will be facing essentially the carport structure and will be covered. The front fixture is on the left and then the side and building mounted fixtures under the carport is the fixture on the right. So creating more of a cozy porch, front porch feeling, which we have at every one of these entrances with the fixture on the left. And then more of a functional approach for the one at the rear and at the carports. Carport is going to be prefab. It's also going to be attached to the structure. And it's going to be a corrugated metal roof and entirely painted in white for all of them that will be installed. Moving on to fencing, I also highlighted a couple areas here and pasted in one of our conditions of approval for you to read. The fences are going to exist in all of the areas surrounding the green at four feet in height. And then if you want to read through that condition of approval, but also look on the plans where you see the larger bolded dash red line. That shows where the fence is going to be required to be at six feet in height as opposed to three feet in height, providing more privacy from what will get into those two open spaces kind of in the middle of the development as well as protecting rear yards from side yards and increasing privacy for the residents. Here's the fencing detail, a black stained cedar slat fence that you can easily drive into the ground with the system that they use with the spike system. Again, varying in height from the four to six feet. Moving on to landscape considerations, there's a lot to look at here. Essentially, the design was done by a landscape designer or maybe a landscape architect. The applicant can clarify that at the time, but it's a drought tolerant design and it is compliant with the water allocation that was given for this project. We're going to move first into just looking at the overall plan. Every unit as required by code is required with private open space, essentially a backyard. And then also for multifamily development, there is a required common open space area, which for this project had to be six thousand square feet. So where I have numbered on the plans, one, two and three are what we're going to look at next with the proposed common open space areas. This is common open space area number one. A few benches are going to be located here. Handful of twenty four inch box trees, which will grow well to provide shade, lawn area for kids to play, for people to relax in. And a handful of border plantings that create a nice feel with a mix of plants that will be either evergreen or changing with blooming throughout the season. Open space area number two continues essentially across the roadway from that first open space. I did include here the planting list, which applies to also area one. And again, continues with the same theme of maybe a DG pathway or a crush stone pathway leading to more of a private space where people can recreate and have picnic and relax outside. Open space number three, this was added to meet the requirement. This is going to be essentially an area for people to go with their dogs. A fenced off area for the dogs to play, for people to watch from the outside with a bench there and planting of a handful of trees around the perimeter and smaller shrubs. Moving back into front yard landscaping, there's two types. And we'll see that difference in how the front porches play out for these units. So type A at the very bottom in the middle, you see which units these apply to in terms of this layout. Again, with the shrubs and ground covers proposed, creating just a nice front landscaped area in between the units. And then with type B, you have the porch or deck goes across the way. So it's a little bit of a smaller area and still planted with some ground covers and low growing shrubs in the back for the common areas. Festuca rubra, which is a no mow grass are the option of doing another species, which kind of does provide just that low ground cover that can be walked on and not causing too much damage. This is for you to consider in terms of your discretionary powers over this permit and consideration. This is optional. It is also included in the recommendation where I have a recommendation with it and a recommendation without it. When we look at this design on the perimeter, on the bottom half, you can see outlined in red are essentially five street trees. There's two more if you go up to the street and then on the far right towards the middle of the plan, there's essentially an eighth, an eighth tree, twenty four inch box. This is the main way in which over time shade will be provided in this development. If you decide to, an optional condition of approval would be for them to add more trees and potentially in the front yard planting areas that are larger that do not have the porch that extends across the way. I've highlighted the potential location of those trees to kind of provide imbalance with what they had already proposed, where you would have those areas that wouldn't be covered by the canopies of what they're proposing to plant along the perimeters with those eight trees that were shown on the plans. So that's for your consideration. This is the bench that's going to be installed in the dog park. We do have conditions of approval for the other elements. First time around in the design, there was a playground equipment that was going to be installed. I checked in with Public Works and there is actually a certified playground inspector that would have to look at and approve that because it's being used for multifamily development that has since been removed from the plans and just another picnic bench being proposed. The phasing of that happened with the dog park becoming a third area. Don't know why that's there. Moving on to lighting considerations for the rest of the site, which there are also conditions of approval on at the building permit phase that show compliance with the maximum light limits as well as the height of the fixtures. But essentially looking at street lighting on the plan, I circled in red just two of the fixtures. So you can see the icon and you can kind of place it throughout the roadway. As you see it, they're required to be placed every a hundred and fifty feet. And this is the proposed fixture that they're going to be installing throughout the development if it's approved. I do want to highlight some of the conditions of approval. The first handful were regarding landscaping and the health of that and replacement on a one to one basis. Bicycle racks are going to be required. That's condition of approval, number eight. As briefly covered and looking at the outdoor lighting that we're going to require compliance to be shown with that completely through our code at the time of a building permit plan set. The safety lighting at the hundred and fifty feet in the street and want to make sure that that number is being met. We don't have any dark spaces, even if it is at less than one fifty. Condition of approval, number eleven, talks about that equal distribution of the materials and colors and building finishes that they're choosing to have. Twelve as well talks about that. Moving on to thirteen, we established minimum areas for the common open spaces, including the dog park. And fourteen, we touch base with the green waste, the waste hauler in terms of accessing the site from the private road and then applicant owner being required to complete a access release form. And then lastly, a condition of approval regarding affordable housing agreement for the site and the development, as mentioned earlier, for twelve units out of the sixty. And moving on to the two recommendation options, which if you could read verbatim, whichever one you choose to move forward with tonight, if either of them, the second one being the one with the added condition of approval for additional street trees and that ends my presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Excellent job. I just had a couple of minor little things. I see you caught the typo on page thirty five. I just assume that whatever we do decide there that we're required.
I know, right?
Okay, I want to make sure, you know, because we got it one way here and the slides different. I did have a question on page twenty one. I don't know if you want to go there or not.
You get me back there, Jennifer? My.
There's no plant legend on this slide. Is there a reason for that? It was in our packet.
Just spacing. It's the same as what's shown here.
Okay, so you know my feelings about the Arbutus. So my question is, go back.
What are your feelings?
Oh, you should.
I don't.
So we've got Arbutus on this one in that little area on the left. And then on one other slide, I noticed in similar kind of thing, will people be walking in there and in particular, will kids be in that little area there or is that going to be just shrubs?
I think any area is really accessible.
Okay, then my only suggestion would be nix the Arbutus because they're going to be tracking the berries into their homes all the time. So I don't know why any of our landscape architects use it. They're beautiful looking tree, but they're a mess.
Yeah.
That's just my suggestion.
Sure, of course.
And in our packet, there was a different plant instead of pistachio, which I don't know, or pistachio.
Chinese pistachio.
There was, I think, the cocoa tree in the original in our packets. Does that sound right?
I think there could be, but.
I would, I would nix that as well. If I, I see it's gone in this, but I just want to make sure it doesn't creep its way back in.
We did say.
Yeah, horrible for anything with kids. So I got. Mr. Dodson?
Yeah, could, could you explain again the situation with regards to playground equipment?
It was proposed at one point and we needed to look into a condition of approval to ensure that it would be safe. And then when we went from having the two open spaces proposed and needing more area when area three was created with additional trees in the dog park area, the playground equipment was removed and replaced with a picnic table.
Okay, and do we have any under? I mean, this is multifamily housing.
Right.
There, there could be a lot of kids up there and I don't know where the nearest playground is, but I don't. Is it something that might be reconsidered or is this pretty much the plan as it is?
I think that's worth asking the applicant when they give their presentation.
Okay.
Commissioners, like it?
I like the idea of the dog park. Yeah. Because I was one of the original persons that had for our dog park. I'm the one that went to city council to approve that. It's nice to see that there's another dog park that's coming in.
Well, I got a few more, sorry.
Okay.
So, okay, one of the first questions I had is I noticed that the the exterior light, the kind of cottage light or the the coach light that's on the front, it's shown without any kind of lens. So it's a kind of an exposed bulb. Or we have any condition of approval that requires to minimize offsite glare or put a lens in that of some kind. I like, I like architecturally the look of it, but I noticed that the other ones are sort of dark sky features or they shine down and that one is just a little bit incongruent with the other ones.
Right. At time of building permit, Seminole, they'll have to show full compliance similar enough in terms of the design. It's also maybe not one hundred percent clear at some of the type A versus B that there might be a roof overhang to provide that function of a shield.
Well, so the only thing I recall is that a lot of projects that I developed, it wasn't even just the dark sky where it has to shine down, but you, you didn't want to see the lighting element. So we would put just a clouded lens on it and that would make a big difference. And what it does, it diffuses that light out. So it's softer. It's a little nicer. And so I would certainly encourage that to be something considered. On the, there's three different elevations. There's a number of different colors. Do all of the colors, I guess, go? Can, can all the colors be interchanged on all of the elevations?
The condition of approval is written such that every color will be used, but also the colors will not be directly across the street from or next to each other.
So, so that was my next question. So one of the things that, that, that I've seen when we script streets in communities is that sometimes certain colors are specific to the bungalow style or to the cottage style or whatever. And, and then you don't get that repetition. So I just, I think that given the fact that there's three elevations, they're close together and they're repeated, that that scripting the street escape so that there is a lot of variety. You don't end up with the same elevation next to each other or the same color next to each other would be an enhancement to the project. The, you mentioned that the dog park was added, sort of a new requirement. So what, can you give a little insight on that?
Not necessarily a new requirement. There were multiple revisions of the plans where the common open space requirement, again, of six thousand feet, square feet needed to be met. The first two proposals only had area one and area two. Once we were able to get the calcs for area one and area two, which weren't on the earlier revisions of the plans, then we realized that we needed to add additional area and that was the third place chosen on the property.
There's a lot of topography at that location. So is there going to be retaining walls or anything there or is it all just going to be done through grading?
No retaining wall work. The, you know, the scale that we're looking at though, too, is also pretty large on that plan. So the drawings that were provided layered over as well as one that we had from, I think, a geo engineer showed that it was before the slope starts again.
Okay, so it looks like there's about ten feet of slope in that area. So that was my first question. What is, what is the, the parking requirement zoning wise for, for this project?
Two per unit.
Okay, so just in my experience when I've, I mean, this is effectively like a P U D. And in my experience, there's, there's going to be a real problem with visitor parking. I'm just guessing that these roads are, are narrow. They're probably at twenty feet maximum and they're also going to serve as a fire lane, which means there's no parking along the side of the road.
There will be room for parking along the side of the road, I believe, but I'll let the designer speak to that.
Yes, I just, I'd be curious on that. And, and this is one of those things where we may not have the authority to, to say, you know, because, because it may comply with the zoning. But I certainly would like to make recommendations that are going to enhance the project and make it better. I mean, I appreciate the desire for a, a dog park, but I mean, I'd rather have visitor parking over there than a dark dog park. I think it would enhance the project. And, and I certainly would support the applicant if they were to consider something to add some additional parking. I, I've seen it where on projects like this, you know, there'll be pullouts on the side of the street or, you know, where there's landscaping on the side of a house, you might be able to get a couple of spots in or whatever. And I know it'll be an enhancement because what'll end up happening is there's going to be a lot more vehicles than there's space for. And if they all spill out on, on the street, you know, it's just one of those things that, that may sort of degrade the quality of it. I, I looked at doing a project like this years ago and I think it's, it's brilliant. I think it's very smart to, to use manufactured homes in a rental community like this. I think there's a lot of value in doing it. And I think it gives, it gives people sort of the, the single family experience rent, but rental. And, and so I think there's, there's value in that. But I, you know, I also recognize that what ends up happening to families, you have more vehicles and it's one of those things that might be a detractor down the road. Okay, that's all I've got. With that said, shall we open up public comment? So, I'm sorry.
I just had one more. On the, on the light fixture, is that powder coated? What, the exterior ones?
The round, oh, I'd have to read the full spec. I don't recall.
In this environment.
Yeah.
It won't last. So if you can replace that somehow, I know it's hard, kind of, kind of the go to thing, but the powder coat will not hold for very long.
All right. Well, this time what we'll do is, is we're going to open the podium to the applicant, applicant representatives. Please introduce yourself. What we'll do is we'll give you, I think we'll go, we'll give you up to ten minutes, you know, because I think we're going to have questions for you as well before we then open up to general public comment. So, but go ahead and introduce yourself and make your presentation first and then we'll run questions by you after that.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Gary Coats, planning consultant. We're located in Carmel, been there forty six years. And we've had the pleasure of working here in the city on a number of projects. So it's good to be back again. Thanks for the opportunity to do this. There's not a lot more to add. I mean, I think Beth has done one heck of a good job in, in dealing with a lot of the items. We've been working on this project for a number of months with her to make sure that we comply with all the conditions and all the requirements. Our goal has been to really create a community of opportunity in the community of seaside as well as surrounding areas. There is not a lot of family type housing affordable to get folks in and have them stay. We found in talking with the school district, with your public safety groups here, retention is an issue, trying to retain, trying to have housing that people can afford to stay here and be here. So that's part of our, if you will, mandate in our program was to provide that kind of housing here. And we proposed to do also a participation acquisition, a public participation acquisition program. And that is very simply, for the first thirty days, we will limit the opportunity for people to rent these, these homes to public safety, city employees, teachers, so they have the first right to come in and have these homes be in their community. At the next thirty days, we will allow then the whole city of seaside to come in and they will have the opportunity before it opened up to outside to bring other people in. Our goal is to hopefully facilitate the location of residents, families that are in the area, want to stay in the area, but haven't had the chance to have this kind of an opportunity. So that's, that's kind of been our baseline project objective as we've gone through this. As staff has said, I won't go through the details. I think they've done that, but I can answer questions. We have attempted to design something here. These are prefabricated homes to come onsite. The foundations on these are actually a standard traditional tie down type, type foundation that comes in here. They will be put on the site and brought in, they get lifted up and dropped down on the foundations and in they come there. The benefit is we can bring these in and construct housing at a very quick timeframe as to going through a standard sticks and board type construction program. So from our perspective, that kind of a program gives us the flexibility of bringing as the demand, as we can also get product from the manufacturer. We're kind of limited by what we can get from that person. In going through the conditions, we've gone through every condition. Again, I'd like to compliment Beth and Andy. It has been a real pleasure in working with them and going through. They've been very clear, very helpful, concise in getting us to a project that we can be proud of and work with the city on. The issues of the additional item with respect to landscaping and trees. There's a reason that we provided the number of trees we did and a lot There's a reason that we provided the number of trees we did and a lot of it has to do with the site itself. Most of you probably are familiar with it. It is in haste in a whole atmosphere of trees all around us. We have a lot of trees all on the exterior sides and everything on the project. In addition to that, the maintenance and requirements inside and keeping those up to code, keeping them trimmed back and everything. We don't want to have a lot of trees out all over the, all over the facility. However, we would not be objected at all to working with your staff. And maybe if we could limit the number of trees to maybe an additional five or six trees, work with them to relocate them to where they would like it. We'd be happy to work with them to do that. We don't have a problem in doing that. Um, the condition with respect to the dog park, we've always, we've done these facilities and we find that that's a big requirement of a desirability issue in, in these types of facilities. Is someplace to take their dog that they can run, feel safe and doesn't tear off all over the place. So uh, that was our reasoning of putting that facility in and it helped us meet the common open space requirements. As to parking, each, each unit has, as Beth mentioned, two spaces per, one covered, one uncovered. The depth of those uh parking uh facilities in several cases, in fact, in about um fourteen, uh twelve of the duplexes, you could actually put three cars stacked if you really had to. We don't want to do that because we want to be able to have the required amount uncovered and uncovered, but that is there. Secondly, is that the perimeter street that runs along the property, on the back of the property, Beth, it's this. Let's see. I just want to get to the overall site plan. There we go.
Topo's on five. You need topo.
There we are. That's great. Thank you. Back one, there we, up, back. Back to the other direction if we could. There, there. Perfect. Thank you. Um, at the bottom of the slide, you'll see the red circle trees that are along that area. Along that side of the road, because there are not units fronting on both sides, we can actually have a lane of parking along that side of the road. So for visitor parking, we can have at the bottom cars down in that area that would accommodate visitor parking in that region and still provide adequate depth uh width for uh twelve foot to fourteen foot for a uh fire engine to go through. So that is one place that we could provide them. Uh, the site itself, uh, slope-wise, it is, it's going to be a balanced site onsite. We're going to be working with that. Retaining wells, we don't intend to. We've tried to stay within the actual activity area that was there before, the forty-four unit uh nurses quarters. We've stayed within the parking and within all of the areas, so we didn't go outside of those areas except for just and a couple of areas in the front, we're a little bit further out. Uh, so that we are anticipating uh that we will not need, our engineers have said there won't be a need for retaining walls in this project. Um, see if there's any other items that were brought up. Uh, as to the housing architecture and the lighting, I agree with you totally, putting in a uh uh, a screen or a um, a, a fixture in the front of the lights, uh, 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 like an opaque or a uh sanded whatever. Uh, so it diffuses the light. We'll do that. That's not a problem. Uh, it's intended. That was a good, very good suggestion. Uh, so we'll do that. We'll powder coating, we'll check out that so we don't get into that problem on uh, on our street lighting. So we don't have long-term maintenance issues out there. And planting wise, yes, we, we can work with staff and put in a different uh tree instead of the cocoa, which that one we've gotten rid of. But yes, we can, we can definitely do that because it creates problems for us as well for maintenance of it. So we would be happy to do that. Um, and the architecture, we have the three different designs as you've seen uh, brought before you. Our intent is not to have all, all one sign all in a row. We're going to spray those out. We're going to work with staff to get a location for those so that not only design, but color is also changed within there so that we don't have a repetitive situation. We can vary that as we go along. So those, other than the condition with respect to the trees, which we would like consideration of maybe allowing us to go down to maybe five or six, working with your staff will locate those. Uh, as to parking, we can put those, we can have parking on that lower street section, which would accommodate. The last time we figured out, it'll accommodate over fourteen to eighteen cars, depending on compact and, and regular spaced uh lengths. So with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll conclude my presentation, but I'm available to answer questions. Uh, we have the owners, the developers of the project here and the owner of the property here. So we've got the full group of everybody to answer questions.
Hang tight then, stay there for a moment. And do we have any um commissioners' questions for any of the development team? Okay, I, I would just say that I, I would, I would certainly entertain substituting some of the trees on that bottom edge for additional parking spaces. I think you could, you could still break it up with some, you know, with some um, uh, pop-outs that have some landscaping or something, but I think that would be an enhancement to the project, even if it's not legally a requirement. Um, that said, then why don't, I mean, unless any of the other team has anything to say, we'll close it and we'll just go to a regular public comment.
No, I think we're set.
Okay. All right. If there are any other members of the public wishing to comment on this project, please come forward, state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. Doesn't seem like we have anybody here. Are we doing the raise your hand feature online anymore? Okay, well, we have checked and it's noted then that we have no further comments. So we'll close the public comment. Um, period, and we will bring it back to the commission and any other questions that we might have or further discussion.
Just for us, um, I don't know that we need the optional part of her recommendation, but it wouldn't be a bad idea. I would just eliminate the fourteen personally and just put language in there that's, if we decide to go that way, uh, maximizing potential parking with the need for breaking it up uh somehow. So, uh, I don't, I don't know how to phrase that, but if, if we need it, but if we do decide we like that.
I don't know that we would need to make that a condition of approval, but rather than we, we would authorize the approval to include that feature. You, you've, you've told us, Andy, in the past that we can't say they can do either or, we have to make a decision, right?
So your options are to um either, so my rec- my suggestion would be start with the base recommendation that you have in front of you. If there are particular things that you want to add, we can add those, make those little changes. Um, you can also, what we've done in the past is um, we've added language that says that the um, like, for example, if you remember Seven Harrow Court, there was a requirement that uh filming be put over the window. And rather than determine what that film would be, there was a direction, we added a condition that said that community development staff will work with the applicant and the neighboring property owners to identify a film that does this. So what you could do is you can delegate to community development staff um, any issues with, so you just give us some direction.
Yeah, we had one project though, I recall, where we, we wanted to give them an either or and you told us we couldn't do an either or. We either had to approve it with that feature or not, because, because there, that, the, the, there was a character of the approval. And, and so if we were to authorize staff to would, would, would it be sufficient to authorize staff to work with the applicant to design additional parking spaces along the side of the street in lieu of some of the landscape area?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I think that as, as long as we're, we're staying consistent with the requirements of the code.
Okay.
Of course.
Fair enough.
Um, but uh, yeah, an example of what you couldn't do would be telling us to uh either uh, you know, identify more trees or figure out how to get more parking, right? That would be an or situation that, you know, it's like, we don't know what to do, but what you're proposing is something we are, we would be able to do.
Okay.
So a condition like that we can work with.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I, I like that idea. A fair number of people because there is only one in the city and that's um, Pachetti and that's on the other side of town. So people who know people that live up there might be bringing their dog up to go dog walking. So whatever we can do and within the confines of the current design, um, reduce trees. That's obviously one of the options uh I'm all for.
Any further comments or questions?
Well, I, there's a whole lot more uh tot lots around than there are dog parks, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
I, I, I think, yeah, it's kind of a trade-off and, and I think that works. Um, I think that the condition of approval that already addresses the distribution of the colors and the styles seems to be sufficient. And um, you know, I think they've noted that they're gonna, I don't know if we need to add a condition of approval on the, you know, putting some sort of lens in the lights. I mean, it's a small thing, but I just think it would be an enhancement. They've already said that they willing to do it, so. Um, uh, I think my biggest thing would be, I would certainly uh love to see them uh explore the uh ability to fit more parking spaces in on that, on that one, the, the, the boundary road that is, it, it only has uh units on one side and I would be more than happy to give up landscaping there for parking spaces. And I think if you, if they did it with periodic bulbs and maybe a couple of trees or something um, and, and some landscaping that would interrupt it, so it just didn't look like uh only paving. Right. Well, and I mean, I can, you want me to make the motion, I can make the motion. Okay. Um, all right. So on the recommendation, let's see, I just want, give me a second here to read this, so I have. Okay, and give me two seconds, guys, want to look at it. So they already are showing the, on that side, they're, they're asking for more trees elsewhere, but they're already showing one, two, three, four, five trees along that side. So, okay. So I make a motion that we approve architectural review application number AR two zero two four dash zero one zero. Following the um the staff recommendations and the findings. Um, let's see, which includes exhibit A, project plans and project conditions of approval. Um, with the instruction to staff to explore the possibility of adding additional parking on the single-loaded street across from the units. And if there is a removal of the five trees at that location, that they would at least replace those trees, but not be required to add additional trees that were in the other alternative proposal.
So if I could just make sure I'm understanding.
Okay.
All right. So if we can get more parking by removing trees along that, that one road.
Yes.
Um, those trees would need to be relocated elsewhere in the property?
Yeah, we're not asking for fourteen more trees, but if they take out those five trees, they would, or, you know, or let's say they take out three of those and keep a couple of them. They would at least replace those at another location within the site.
Then if I can just propose some language, um, the applicant shall have the ability to relocate the trees along that location, we'll identify it somehow in the language, um, in order to uh provide additional parking along that road.
Correct.
Okay.
And redistribute those elsewhere in the project.
Okay. Great. That, that's the language we'll look to use.
Second.
Motion is accepted.
We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, you have a unanimous approval, so congratulations to you. I do need to read that an appeal, um, someone can't appeal this decision. An appeal shall be submitted in writing within seven calendar days of the date of this decision. The appeal shall state the pertinent facts and the basis for the appeal, appeals are to be addressed to the council, shall be filed with the city clerk. An appeal shall be accompanied by a required filing fee. So that concludes this matter. Congratulations to you.
Thanks very much.
Before, you know, it's funny because we, we were just like uh meeting, asking what happened to the, the, this project. So we're glad to see it moving forward and um, and frankly, the um, the the, the rental style of uh more of a single family, it's, it's well-needed. I mean, we're seeing this happening all over uh, the country, um, where subdivisions are even being built just to rent them. So I mean, I, I get it and um, think it'll fit a nice need. I wish we had more of them. So, well done. All right. Next item of business, reports from commissioners.
I just have a kudo to Andy. It probably, it wasn't even him.
Yeah.
But you know how we've been harping after that intersection, the, the intersection from hell, uh, where the kids walk up the sand to the school. Fremont and California and Highway one. Well, somebody, I don't know who, put in some quick creed or something. I don't know what they did. I don't know how long it's going to last. But it's done. Thank you.
So at that same intersection, and we had suggested this a while back, which was, there's the, when you're northbound on Fremont and, and you approach that intersection, there's the right-hand turn lane onto Monterey Road. And um, you guys striped that and delineated it and it's been a huge help. I don't know, though, you know, one of the things that happens is if you get, if you get a hundred yards or so back, that line doesn't continue and, and people try to, they think you're trying to pass on the right-hand side and they try to block it. I, I would be really cool if there was a way, oh, no, no, I, it happens to me all the time. And, you know, my wife gets angry at me when I try to like squeeze my truck in between vehicles so I can get up. Because, you know, I've got like, I've got a hundred yards of nobody there and I want to just turn right. I don't want to wait in the traffic. I don't know if there's a possibility for, you know, because we have the, the line that designates the right in turn lane. If there's a way to put dashed, you know, lines further back to just to identify it, you know, how you, you do when, when you're when you get to like the exit only on a freeway or whatever. If, if there were a way to do something like that, I think it would only enhance that better, because what happens is at the end of the day, that area gets really, really chugged. And if people can get by to make that right-hand turn, it frankly frees up some of the traffic in there. It just really alleviates some of it. So just a small thing. Um, any other reports from commissioners? How about reports from staff?
Just a little bit of an update on the uh, the major transit stop issue. Um, so I think I mentioned last time the state issued some um, some guidance related to that. And long story short, it's uh, it basically was a bomb for um a bomb, B O M B metaphorically, metaphorically, not literally metaphorical.
Like, like a cluster bomb?
Yeah, like it, well, um, the way they're defining it is not how most jurisdictions were defining it and it's actually thrown some other jurisdictions' projects in jeopardy. Um, yeah. To be ironically, the only, the only major transit stop that might still exist in the city of Seaside is the one at Noche Buena and Broadway. No, that's the one that could be left. All the others would be eliminated. So we'll get something fairly on that, but um, it's uh, yeah, um, they, they took a, they, they took a Well, I'll give you the details and I'll give you the guidance and, yeah. Yeah?
Yeah.
Apologies. I'll do that now. I'll do that now. Okay. I'm making note because I'm going to, I'm going to point to the right place because uh.
Nobody wants to think about you anymore.
You know what? That's a, that's a good thing.
I'm just messing. I'm just messing.
Yeah. It's actually quite, uh, provided quite a bit of consternation in the, among, you know, kind of the community development professionals because there was no public outreach or circulation and just one day they appeared and it was just um and, and their definition doesn't match with the definition of some other state agencies. But for the purposes of AB twenty forty-nine, it is H C D that gets to make determinations as far as that, how that law gets interpreted. But major transit stops apply to other agencies and they've got different ways of looking at it, so we're having fun. Um, so, but I will uh send that to you.
Okay, feel free, yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion for adjournment? All in favor? Aye.
We're very formal.
Do we have, do we have a vote for, from you, Mr.?